Let's pray. Put them in your direction. Pray for our country and those who serve it. Pray for the city and just to guide us tonight and everything we do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Start off with mayor's announcements, appointments, and votes. Gary Wilson had a birthday. Happy birthday. Give you a card. Mr. Brock, we have a birthday card for you as well. Here's your pass, correct? Well, yours is July 3rd. Happy birthday. And on to recognizing some fire department promotions to engineer. Chief Compton.
Mayor of City Council, apologize for starting late. It's gotta be a first. Anyway, we have promotions. We did promotions last month for engineers position. Engineers position is basically the driver operator of the truck. As you all will know, they don't give those fire trucks away. It's a very expensive piece of equipment and a lot of responsibility to drive and operate a truck. Especially nowadays, everybody has their cellphone. They're not paying attention to what's going on. We're in a hurry to get there and the crews can tell you and Mr. Smith well knows, we are constantly, you have to be alert what you're doing. Our test is an internal promotional test. They have their state certifications. Lisa come out when we were doing the testing and basically we got one test we do with our old aerial that operates nothing like this one here that they have by cone, a traffic cone setting on Parks and Recreation Building and they have another one that's tied to the rope at the end of the aerial. It's basically like threading a needle at 75 foot out. And they had to drop those two cones together on each other to pass this skill. What we're looking for is can they control the truck? And when Lisa come over and seen us do that, she was shaking her head because there's no way in the world I could ever do that. So they're a very talented group, as with all of our staff. They all have a lot of talent. The first ones we have up tonight is Sterling Flag and his wife Sarah. Come on down. We're right here. Remember, you've got a flashlight. Mayor has your badge and Sarah's gonna...
You can give it to your wife so she can continue. No pressure.
She wouldn't stick.
Really turn it around. Sterling, congratulations.
Thank you.
And you're a visual engineer. Congratulations.
Chris Tindall is up next. His wife Carrie.
Here's your badge. Chris, here's your engineer. Congratulations.
Sterling's... One more thing. Your grandmother plays at some hours. Plays in my land, which the mayor happens to work there.
Yeah, we've got a backup for you.
If our thing don't work out, just okay. She's 101.
Almost.
Almost 101. She plays at the Grand Ole Opry this Saturday night.
Wow.
Are you going?
Yep.
Good deal. So if you have a chance to watch, I don't know, channel it on. You have no idea either. Get a chance to watch Grand Ole Opry this Saturday night. That's it, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, guys, and congratulations. I think we have no public hearing. Moving on to citizen participation. Anybody who would like to speak to anything not on the agenda, please step to the podium, give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
I'm doing this for someone else. It's a thank you to the fire chief and the fire department. Just when I needed you, there you were. Republic Fire Department, dear sir, I'd like to send a big thank you to the crew responding to a house fire at 3198 East Jameton. I don't know if that's spelled correct or not, but Jameton, Monday evening, June 19th, 2017. They were told by someone on site, the house was empty because they had not used, because they had used the doorbell and they had knocked. They broke in anyway and found my son, Mike's girlfriend, Danielle, asleep in bed. This could have been tragic. She worked two jobs and was exhausted. Thanks again for a job well done. Weldon Wade from Billings.
Great. Well, thank you to the fire department. Continuing with citizen participation, anybody who would like to speak to anything not on the agenda, please step to the podium, give your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. Seeing none, citizen participation is closed. Need a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Old business.
Excuse me.
Resolution number 17-R-51, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, accepting the bidding process and cooperative purchasing terms between In situ Form Technologies USA LLC and the City of Independence, Missouri, and authorizing the city administrator to execute a contractor agreement for the rehabilitation of sanitary sewer infrastructure. Mr. Brock.
Thank you, sir. I should have received...
Sorry, stand by. You get my motion in a second. Motion in a second? Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Brock.
Thank you, Mayor. I should have received the information. I have some information maps on the historical rehabilitation efforts using cured places of pipe line. I have with us tonight Craig Lesby, our wastewater superintendent, and Craig will give you just a brief summary of information that we had sent out.
I thank you all for allowing me in this moment to speak. In the years past, Republic has always had a long history of INI. And if you aren't familiar with that term, it stands for inflow and infiltration. And layman's turns just basically means unwanted waters getting into our sewer system. Where that could be, there are several sources. The inflow part is when it basically means a large gush of water comes in all at once. Infiltration means is when water's kind of trickling into the system through various different defects in the piping. The resolution that we're presenting this evening is basically dealing with the inflow effect, excuse me, the infiltration effect of heavy rains or such like what we had last month and the previous month. In situ form, we've used them for several years and basically they do good work. It's not basically, they do good work. They basically put a new liner inside a pipe, a new pipe inside of a pipe. It seals up a lot of these defective joints, whether it's cracks or areas of pipe that are broken or areas of pipe are actually missing sections of pipe. And it can also seal up around the joints that are leaking or intrusions where the people's service lines are entering into the pipe. We have used it for a long period of time and we have seen positive effects. Unfortunately, I do not have any empirical data to substantiate my claims. I'm just going off field knowledge from being here for 25 years. I have seen positive effects of this process. For instance, one of the areas that I can definitely highlight on is the manhole down Highway 60 and Main Street. Prior to lining portions or all that complete section, it didn't take much of a rain and that manhole would surcharge and we'd actually would have sewage coming up over that manhole because of too much water coming into the system and our lift station that's connected to not being able to keep up with that. We have removed, it still surcharges on occasion, but it's a lot rarer. It's not near as often as we used to there. So I do know that there is positive effects. Some of the other issues, the positive parts of In situ form is that it is a one long continuous section of, it's basically one pipe, zero joints. So there aren't any joints that's going to leak later on in the future. And by with that, that also helps ensure the pipe. The areas where the pipe may be defective, especially on clay tile pipe, which we still have quite a bit and our tables show how much. We have 23.4 miles of vitrified clay tile pipe. We typically call it just a VCP. It does ensure integrity back into that pipe. It does give it back some structural strength where the structural strength, the only thing that's really holding together is kind of luck and mud. I'm really in a sense and by putting this liner in there, it ensures its internal strength and relines it. Now, I know a lot of people, because it is a liner inside the pipe, we actually do lose the diameter of the pipe. It actually does make the interior of the pipe smaller. But because there's zero joints in it and it is slicker than the original host pipe than the clay tile, we actually increase flow rate by putting this liner in. We have, excuse me, I haven't presented for a long time, so please excuse my nerves. But it is a costly process, but in the process it also, we have seen a reduction in cost because we don't have, if it's in the middle of the street, we have street repairs to make. We also have disruption of service as we're replacing pipe if we have to go through and replace that pipe. There's also traffic issues, safety issues that we have to worry about because this is a trenchless method. It does not require any backhoes, does not require any street cuts. And in the long run, it actually is a cost-saving process. Now, the area that we have chosen this year and like previous years, because I do not have any standing flow data and we're hoping that we will get that changed later on, is that when we go out on what we call sewer call and whether that is a complaint from a resident saying, hey, my sewer's not flowing right, or we think there's a problem there, or if it's just hierarchical maintenance that we do. We have, the areas that we have pulled out, we have seen evidence of roots, which if roots are getting in, water's going to be leaking in. And we also have pulled out gravel, bedding gravel, rocks, and also broken pieces of pipe. And it's our field experience is what we've been using for the last several years to actually select our areas. We also do lift station runtimes and that also tells us because in the area like with the area I was talking about on Main Street that goes to lift station four, runtimes, obviously if the collection system for that sub area is getting extra water, the runtimes on the pumps are going to increase. So that's another area that we try to use to help select it. But this area here is just strictly field data from observations of cleaning and sewer lines, removing roots and other debris that you don't want in your sewer system, which is indicative that you have an issue or that you're having some problems that need to be taken care of.
Okay. Questions from council? Comments? Discussion?
If you all want to see a sample of the before and after product, I do have it if you're interested. I don't know if anybody, I don't know if anyone's ever seen the process before or if they know what it looks like.
So first of all, thank you for taking the time to explain this. It's very helpful. I know last council meeting, we had some questions around the process, how well it worked. One question I would pose to you is, do you believe this to be the most effective method for this out there? I mean, are we gaining ground over the time as compared to the dollar spent, in your opinion?
We are gaining ground. That is a real hard question to give a definite yes or no to because it's just, it's how much you're, I mean, there's other sections that inhibit or cause problems. The resident service lines that tie onto it. On that, we can knock out a lot of INI through the sewer mains. But the problem with that is, is the water table, sewer mains here and the water table's here. If we're not allowing water to get in here and the water table's up, it's going to leak in till it gets to the highest point, which at that point, we're starting to hit residents on their service lines. And there are a lot of defective service lines throughout town. So I mean, yes, we do see a positive result on that. Trying to quantify it, I cannot, I can't stand here and tell you, you know, exactly how much reduction I will see or how much reduction we would see in any of this process at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
I got a curiosity question. You're going to align 4,526 foot at a cost of over $100,000.
Yes, sir.
If you dug that up and replaced it, what kind of price would that be? More or less?
It would actually probably be less, I'll be honest. I have not put pencil to paper to give you that an answer for solid. But we're also looking at, if you're talking about city crews doing it or talking about private contractor services, for a hire outside, use private services, will be locked into prevailing wage and it would probably actually cost us more. If we use city services, it'd be less, but then we have other projects that's not going to be getting complete.
Just to reinforce what Craig said, I think we could do it, city crews, maybe if you carry one of those, you can contract it out. You're just expecting it for your $50 a foot through the off area, it would be over double this time.
That's what I kind of figured.
Mr. Jones.
What's the lifespan for the vitrified clay before it needs something like this?
Well, the one thing about clay tile pipe, and a lot of people would probably shoot me for saying this, it's actually, it's a good product. But the problem with it is it's very fragile. I mean, it come made from materials that came out of the ground and so you're just reforming it and putting it back into the ground. But the issue with it is, installation is the main problem with it. It's very fragile. If it was installed properly and never touched again and you have zero ground movement and never got in that area, there are sections of clay tile pipe that are still in good shape that have been in the ground probably for 100 plus years. But we're working in areas where we know evidently something wasn't done right because we're seeing evidence that broken pieces of pipe and such.
I'm just thinking, this is about just under 4% of the total clay pipe, just taking the footage divided by the miles of vitrified clay. It's about 4%. That's a 25-year turn to do it all. What's the lifespan for this pipe once you actually do this line?
50-plus years.
Okay. But you know, we're talking 25 years at $116,000 a year. That's more money than I make. I think we got to know how much it would cost to replace it. I mean, that's a number we've got to, we've got to look at is say, hey, if we dig it up, replace with PVC, what does that cost compared to the 116 here for apples and apples?
Mr. Smith.
What would be the life if we dug it up and put PVC pipe in like the other 87 miles? What would be the lifespan of that compared?
Again, installation is the biggest situation with any type of project. I'm sure that makes sense. And with PVC, I'd still say it's going to be 50-plus years. You know, there's PVC, PVC pipe has not been around as long as, well, we're probably getting close to 50 years with PVC pipe. I don't know if that question can be readily answered at this point.
Just one other thing.
Mr. Wilson.
In the long run, this would be cheaper, would it not? Because if the city has to do it, they're going to be tied up on that for quite a while and that would have other projects not being taken care of.
From my point of view, that's exactly right.
But that's the stuff we need to know. What won't get done if we do this? What would be the cost if we subcontracted out some of the things that would be normally taken care of by the city and do this? Those are all questions that I think have to be answered before anything like this can be passed.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cameron. So Craig, I appreciate the explanation, which is where it's at. But I have a hard time from, I know it says that you're recommended doing it, but I'm having, I'll have a hard time recommending to the council just knowing what it is because we have not, I'm a numbers guy. When you're looking at all that data, it still doesn't identify in a rain event when you've got 11 million gallons, we're just sticking our fingers and you're just trying to, you're doing whatever you can do. So I appreciate you bringing what you know to be there, but I know you could run a camera up there, find that broken section, replace that section instead of lining the whole pipe. So I know that can be done. But you've got to identify where your 11 million gallons are coming from and this does not get you there. So if you look at that sheet, $500,000 has been spent, but you can't tell me how many gallons has been reduced going into your wastewater plant. And until you can identify that, it's very difficult to continue to keep putting $100,000 a year just to say that's what you know. Because we can go fix those spot repairs for a whole lot less than $116,000. And our crews can do that. Until we know where the root cause of it is, not roots, it could be eve spouts. There's a resolution that's been added to this agenda that'll do an INI study of your entire system that will smoke test it and say, where is the water coming from? What do you need to replace? You need a holistic approach, not just a bits and pieces each year. So you asked last meeting, what impact are we making? The answer is still, we don't know. And until we know what that's going to do volume-wise, I have a hard time recommending to spend $50,000 doing it. I don't have a problem in our maintenance budget to go out and do the spot repairs, but I did communicate with David that I would not recommend you approve this. I would recommend you approve the INI study. But Craig's trying to, I mean, In situ form works, it does reduce the pipe. The cost to replace it, it's about 50/50. But you need to figure out what you need to replace and then decide whether or not it works. Because if it's in an open field and it's clay tile and it's cracked, you dig down, just replace the pipe, it's a whole lot cheaper. But if it's got a bunch of trees underneath it, you can either pipe burst it or In situ form it. So, but my recommendation is that we do not approve this. We approve the INI study and then come back. But still work on these things you've identified through spot repair. But we got to identify what the cause is so that we can start investing a certain amount per year so that when someone's asking, why is my rate so high? We got to reduce, because some of it may just be education. You got people with the roof eve spouts tied into our collection system. We're collecting their rainwater off their house or their sump pump in their basement. And so those are, those are not supposed to be connected to our system, but there's a number of them that are. So until you identify what the problem is, it's hard, you're going to keep spending $100,000 a year and 11 million gallons is going into your sewer system every rain event, right? Roughly? Large-scale event.
That's the largest scale event we've ever had and that was a one-time issue, I believe, where we had numbers that high. I don't know if you mean 11 million gallons in a 24-hour period or 11 million gallons over the full duration.
So in a rain event, how many gallons do we run?
Depending, every rain event's different and how, and how we handle it or whatever we see. If we had a two-inch rain this evening, right now we are running probably about 1.5, slightly less than 1.5 million gallons right now. A two-inch rain would probably put us up over to three. But that depends upon the intensity.
Sure.
Also, I mean, there's several factors and I wish I could sit there and say, one-inch rain is going to equal 1 million gallons. I can't do that.
But an INI study will identify where that's coming from.
Yes, sir.
So you can start targeting your money to where you're going to get the most, I mean, you put $100,000 to one area, you know you're going to reduce it by 500,000 gallons in a rain event. Right now, you'd have no idea what it's going to do other than fix roots or broken pipe. But we got to identify that. And that's not something, they wouldn't have known that when they presented that. That's just something when I see it, it creates concern to recommend it, but they have to bring it before you. Try to bring out, because INI is a problem. Going to 3 million gallons, 100% of the flow is a problem. Any other questions, comments, concerns from council?
As far as using our manpower to replace pipe, I'm a big fan of using our own guys. It keeps them with a job, gives us a reason to keep them, keeps them employed and keeps them busy. So there is some, that would be some of my factor in that also.
I'll just add to what Mr. Smith said, but I'd also like to understand what the backlog is of work and, you know, are we just piling on without, you know, having, what the cost is to have our men do it. I definitely like the study. I think it's holistically an awesome move because it will help us really see the picture we're trying to understand, you know?
I understand and I, and the INI study, I'm in favor of it. That's for sure, because we do need to locate and pinpoint exactly where the resources are or where the water's entering the system. But I, you know, it's just, it's years of field experience is why these areas were selected here.
Sure.
It's not, we didn't throw a dart in the map.
All right.
Totally understand that and appreciate you bringing that to the table.
Mr. Resher, do you have something? Nothing else? Okay, thank you, sir, very much. So council, we have, since we have a, another resolution on the agenda that is somewhat similar or could have an effect with this, you have the option to vote now or table it until that resolution is done.
I make a motion and we table it.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Will be tabled until the end of the other business resolutions. On the new business, I need a motion in a second for the first reading of bill number 17-26.
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, adopting Chapter 246 prescription drug monitoring program.
No, ma'am.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, here we go. Bill number 1726. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving the final plat of the Monte Cristo Phase 2 subdivision located in the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson.
Yes. This bill will approve the final plat for the Monte Cristo Phase 2 subdivision, a residential subdivision located in the high-density, single-family residential zoning district here in the City of Republic. This will be the first of two phases. That was preliminary platted in 2015. This phase includes 29 lots. All of these lots are at least 7,000 square feet in area. It also includes the dedication of the right-of-way easements necessary to contain public infrastructure and other utilities. The approval of this plat will of course plat these lots and make them eligible to be sold and building permits to be issued. Staff recommends approval.
All right. We have any questions from Mr. Tyson? Comments? Okay, we have none. If anybody has any questions, this is the first read. Please give it to Mr. Tyson. Thank you, sir. On to other business. The first item on the agenda would be the discussion regarding group daycare. I would ask for a, actually, I would ask for a motion to move that down to the, at the end of our resolution so that we can have time to discuss that.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. Resolution number 17-R-53, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, accepting a bid for rope rescue equipment. Need a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Chief Compton.
Good evening. This is Tim King. He is actually one of the champions of this program. I'm going to take care of the money part of this and then he's going to explain the details. details. This kind of finishes out the fire grant that we received. The amount of this bid is $8,833.04. FEMA will pay, excuse me, $8,391.35, or 39 cents. The city's match is $441.65. And Tim's going to explain to you the need and how we got to where we are and gang questions asked because he knows all about.
All right, welcome, Mr. King.
Good evening. So, we wrote this for three options. We kind of had a need versus a want and a really want. With our new training tower, our new burn trailer, we've got some new opportunities for some expanded training. So, we wrote a bid for harnesses, ropes, all the technical rescue equipment that we're trained for, that over half of us are trained for, that we don't have. We have to go to other departments to train with them to maintain this. So, with that, we, this will give us all of the equipment that we need to do, high angle, low angle, confined space, everything that, as our department's growing in call volume, we are starting to see more and more of these specialty calls that we are in dire need of, this kind of stuff to meet the needs of our citizens.
Have any questions from council, comments, discussion? None? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries eight to zero. Resolution number 17-R-54, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, awarding the bid for self-contained breathing apparatus and related equipment for the fire department and authorizing purchase. Need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Chief Compton?
This was an item that was in the 2014 Fire Department Sales Tax Budget. The City of Baller, the Willard Fire Protection District, and the City of Republic, we kind of teamed up together to go out to bid for this. Baller was the lead agency. We used the same cooperative purchase language that we had used with the City of Springfield previous years when we bought breathing apparatus. We need to, we have a new truck with four seats in it. We're only requesting to buy two breathing apparatus. And staff has kind of recommended, and I'm in total agreement, since we've got a couple of water tenders with SCBA's on them, and they're not being used like they should be. So we're going to ship that equipment off those two water tenders, put them on the new truck, and we now only need to buy two breathing apparatus to fill out all the seats, all the riding positions in this particular truck. So we'll save a little bit of money there. The Scott dealer in Missouri is kind of a sole-source item. It's the way they do things. It's sell fire equipment. Baller advertised publicly and all of those bids are on files, whether the public notification too as well. Rhonda had a chance to review all that. We're asking to buy two SCBA's and two face masks. Total cost is $14,000 and we're looking at about a 30 to 40-day delivery time.
Okay, any questions, discussion? Mr. Smith?
Are you going to be able to work on these or are you going to have to buy other tools or anything?
No, we've got all the tools that we can, we do a wall or repairs in-house.
We don't need any updates for the new packs?
Shouldn't.
Okay.
We didn't buy the next-generation pack. We're still on the AP-75, which is pretty much bulletproof.
Okay.
And these funds are from the fire taxes, aren't they?
Fire sales tax, yeah. It was a budget, we had roughly twice as much budgeted because we were thinking we were going to buy four packs to put in the four seats. Like I said, the two packs that were, well, almost two water tenders are not being utilized and it makes better sense of the funds to shift those over.
Appreciate you looking at that objectively.
It is what it is.
Any other discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries eight to zero. Resolution number 17-R-55, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the execution of a contract addendum with Olson Associates Incorporated for survey and design of water main alignment. Need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Brock?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a budgeted project for the Water Department. They've got 24,000 appropriated to do a water main replacement and to provide some of the specifics. So I want to introduce Jason Davis. Jason is our Assistant Water Superintendent, and he is presently in the lead on this project.
Welcome, Mr. Davis.
Thank you. As I stated, we are, the Water Department desires to install a about 1,300-foot, six-inch water main on Alexander Avenue from Hind Street all the way to the end, be north on Alexander. Probably do it in two phases, probably go to Logan for the first phase and then on to the north for the second. The reason we're doing this, as of right now, the surface lines or the services are in the rear of the property, which makes it tougher repairs for, even for reading the meters. So we would like to move everything to the front to make that a little easier. Also, adding, making this a six-inch main will also help with fire protection. We stated a need to have Olson design, do the surveying and design and prepare engineer plans for this job. This will be done by a city crew. We anticipate this job could be done in 45 days, depending if we can get on it and not get moved up to other things or water mains, breaks and other places. Besides that, I think it's about it.
Okay, any questions from council? Mr. Smith?
Mine would be for David. Do we, when's our contract up for Olson? Do we still have, do we have a contract with Olson?
General Services is 2018.
Okay.
Just a follow-up question, does that mean we can't go out for bid to another engineering firm?
It does not. And the format here, these smaller projects, we do an addendum to the General Services contract where you want to specify a particular scope of work and the dollar bound is not a large cost. This scale of a project will be difficult to get the pricing on, to do a real qualifications-based selection process where engineering firms essentially front the resources necessary to put together a qualification package and engineering sessions. I mean, they do that on spec. They front that cost. And so the smaller projects, we just now, particularly where we have a bid working relationship with specific individuals, Olson, just to negotiate the scope and the fee and attach to that general service.
Most engineering firms would say 700, 800 will pass. I'm going to go through the travel.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah. Mr. Dyke?
This question, is this, I understand, want to get it out front so it's easier to service or maintain. Is this a lot of areas in Republic that this is out way that's going to become up in the future that have to be done?
No, we have a few others. This one seems to be more of a problem than the others. This is one we thought we should do first.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Oh, sorry, Mr. Smith, do you have another question?
I'd like to see us try to go out for, try to get some proposals from some other engineering firms due to the fact, I mean, if we go for bid for air packs, rope equipment, we make all these other departments go out for bid, this is no different. We've got, we need to make sure we're using the money responsibly.
Anything else from anyone else? Thank you, sir. So do you have a motion? Just talking for the future?
I'm just talking.
Okay. Just want to make sure I didn't want to miss something there.
Making a comment.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes seven to one. Resolution number 17-R-56, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the execution of a contract addendum with Olson Associates for project administration at the Garten Business Park. Need a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Brock?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a similar contract format with Olson where we are using the basic terms in the General Services Agreement, but have an addendum for a specific scope of work. And that relates to the development of the Garten Industrial Park in Drury Lane. We've got a key position that's vacant right now, street superintendent with city crews scheduled to do the work. We're confident they can handle the physical side of it. We're, the skills that they are missing at the moment are administrative skills. So we're looking for contract assistance to help with the acquisition of materials, rental equipment, to help compile our labor cost, our equipment use costs, so we have a good accurate accounting of what was expended out there. And also help coordinate the contractors and other public utilities that will be installing facilities in the Garten Business Park. The proposal that you have is a bill per hour at a rate of 93.36 per hour. Contractually is not to exceed 13,000 per month. I really estimate time involved will be somewhere between eight and 20 hours per week. It's not a full-time job, but it is a skill that we're going to need as we go forward.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Self?
What's the anticipation of how long this project will take?
Things will really start gearing up later this month and in the month of August and September will be the heaviest months.
Do you see it as a two-month, three-month, like how long do you think we will be?
October 31st is what I have penciled in as completion, surface restoration and...
Anything else from council? Mr. Dyke?
Question, you said this was something because you're missing this key position. Is it a position filling, that we're looking to fill?
We are. We've advertised. I've got one applicant that we'll interview next week. So it is a position that we're actively trying to fill.
I have one question. This is not to exceed 13,000 a month, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is Drury, we're in cooperation, or we're in partnership with Drury on this, are they paying that?
I would expect this to be a reimbursed cost, yes, sir.
Are they aware of this portion of it? Do you know? Not supposed to. They would not be aware of that.
So would they have, so would they have anybody out there to oversee the building of it? Would they have a GC or would they have anybody?
Who's that?
Drury.
I don't believe so. Just remember, we're the GC.
Right, right, right. But I don't know if they had anybody that's overlooking, if we had multiple eyes on it or what, if it's just us.
What Brandon's trying to say is, do they have a solution to this? Can they provide us with a resource to do what we're asking Olson to do?
I'd have to defer to Mr. Cameron on that.
We need to ask Drury, they paid for the engineering of the, they paid for all the engineering of the line or the street and everything of that nature. So I do not, they've not been approached. The question I think is probably, a good one, is do other juries willing to reimburse? If that's a reimbursement, is that what your question is?
No, he was, I mean, that was the question I had.
Really, I mean, we're, based on the time, or the time communicated, it could be in upwards of 52,000, right? So my question is, basically, have we gone to bid? Have we looked at options? Can we look at options to see how we can save a few dollars on this? And that was just one of the options.
Right.
Literally, in two resolutions, though, it seems like we could have someone in-house and save money in the two projects that we've had. And so that's what my concern is, is like, these are simply two items and we're paying someone that, I mean, we're paying Olson that we could have had someone in-house and been money ahead on literally two projects.
I thought I might try to address that, sir. The water main project will have field surveyors, licensed surveyors, will have drafting techs, and will have one engineer. So there may be six different people that touch that project. This particular contract, it is person-specific. Steve Bowlen has got a long background in construction management and inspection. His resume is attached. If we could hire an individual like Steve Bowlen for street superintendent, I think we'd be, we'd be money ahead and better off to take that route. At present, we're still sorting through applicants for the position, and I think there'll be a period where that individual that is hired is, just getting their feet underneath them and the timing would not work out even if we could get someone on board here in the next 30 days or so. So we have tried to consider other alternatives and believe this is an appropriate approach.
Mr. An?
He answered my question.
Mr. Dyke?
Question on this from Mr. Cameron, is this something, since it's potentially going to be a reimbursement from Drury, that it should be run past them before we approve to obligate them?
I'd be, so it follows up a question, did we incorporate in our estimate, construction management services that was provided to Drury on the front end that included this cost? Because we already have two construction managers on our own staff. So did we include construction management?
We did not. We included what was presumed to be our own superintendent's time out there, substantially different hourly rate.
Then I would suggest that that has to go back to tell them what that estimate difference is. If that's your question, then I think Drury needs to agree to that. If that's not included, then that's going to be higher than what they, we, and we, all we could provide was estimates on the front end of the project. You don't know until you hit, whether you're out there in construction, rain, rock, or whatever. So I understand that there's a contingency at it, but I don't know if it's 45,000 more for construction management than what we had, and that's material.
Anything else? I think with that, we have, I need to understand what council wants here.
I think we need to make a motion to go back to Drury and introduce the expenses to see if...
If that's the case, then we need a motion to postpone, not table.
Okay. I'll make a motion to postpone approval of this resolution.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries eight to zero to be postponed until the next council meeting. Resolution number 17-R-57, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing a balance due payment to Midwest Incorporated for encoder, receiver, transmitter. Need a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see from the memo, and I'll tell you when it say it's a new day, it's a whole new day of transparency. You can see last year, and you can actually look at one of the attachments where it appears it's been a trend or at least a pattern where the city buys water meters in bulk, or the transponders that go with them, that goes all the way back to 2015, they receive them in bulk, and they're billed on a weekly basis, which just happens to be underneath the bid procurement rule. And so, once we began to transition in the finance department, we began to find different things, this is one of them. So when the vendor called and said, we want payment due of, past due payment of over 24, actually, it's about $36,000. Naturally, I denied the payment to find out what was going on. So when we pulled the query on how payments were being made and contacted the office, you could see, that's why I've attached it as an attachment, you could see how it's been invoiced on a weekly basis. What that does is it maintains it under a balance of $5,000. Even though we had full, the city during those times had the entire inventory on-site, it would show on the invoice as backordered, and it would be billed on a weekly basis. And so, even though the city had those on hand, and so we actually have all these materials or had all these materials since last August when they were ordered, and then the company would backbill on a weekly basis. Actually, those people that are responsible and all are here, but at the same time, to be very transparent with what it is, we cannot... to be very transparent with what it is, we cannot pay that bill. We only have $24,000 and we owe that without your approval. So, instead of continuing that process, we stopped it and said, "We need to go before council to present what it is."
So, in your mind, the vendor was aware?
The vendor is, the vendor was aware, yes. I've discussed it with, with the vendor. CFO, in fact, and the sales rep.
How long, how far back does this go?
2015. Well, you can look, in attachment A, it shows that we made orders. When you start looking for little things like, so you go back to 2, 3, 15, you can see there's a 49.75, which just happens to be under 5,000. You see one there, it's 4,995, 4,983. You can pretty much follow a trend that, and speaking to the sales rep and then to the CFO of the company, just asking, well, I mean, because Jared, I believe, was with me or someone was in the room when I made the phone call and said, "I'm curious if it says it's backordered, but we have them all in stock. That seems a bit odd. They don't, we're showing them, but it's being billed weekly." And so, it seems that according to, according to them, and I'm sure the other side, those who were working for the city at that time would probably say that, point the finger at who. My thing is, we've got an outstanding balance that we've got to deal with. It's a new day. We've transitioned those positions and different people that are handling the purchasing. I will tell you, attachment B, David brought a bid before this council last March that was actually for the same thing. It demonstrates that the company we were buying these for is actually the same price as what they were selling them to us for. So, there is not a overprice on the meters or the modules that were attached. So, first thing we did is went to look to see, have they ever been bid out? And so, seeing the March bid demonstrates that what we were paying for them is what they, they were the low bid in March of 2017, but there was no bid in 2015 and 2016. There's another issue on here that's on the attachment A that'll be referenced, no, I don't even have my, it'll reference 11,598. That's for 600 meters that were ordered, that were the wrong meters and shipped back. So, they added a 20% restock fee, which we have denied the restock of, because there is no contract, there is no, there was no bid. There's nothing, there's not even a purchase order that we can find in the files for, for this issue. And so, while we continue to work on it and straighten out the policies, this is some of the stuff you find. And so, I want to be very transparent about it. We need to pay the $24,680, 624, 640. But I do not agree with this $11,598 for a restocking fee. There's no contract that signifies that we agreed to pay that fee for it. So, I think I'll let Ron to handle that portion of it. But we have, we are in receipt, talking to staff. Those were put into a garage when they were received, and so, we do have these, the materials on hand.
Questions, discussion?
Sorry, is the $24,640 including the $11,000 restocking?
It is not. We're not, we sent an, we received an invoice today for 36,000, and unless there's a contract between us and them, I don't believe we have a valid agreement. And so...
Did you or Debbie find this?
Find the issue of certain bidding?
Oh, I found, it was, when it was brought that we had a vendor, about three weeks ago, a vendor was asking for $24,000. I wanted to know why. So, whenever I saw the receipt, it was very easy right off the bat to say, "Here it is." And this guy was, you know, I won't say he was demanding payment, but when you haven't been paid since October and the finance officer is no longer here paying you, and so, the deal, whoever the deal or how the deal's worked out, you're sitting there going, "So, I made the call to say I want to find out." But after you read the invoices, you can pretty much follow the, I mean, coming from public works, you can see how people, this is not, I don't, I don't believe it, I don't want to say this, it's not uncommon, when I've seen other places in different, people will try to standardize their bid laws or procurement laws to say, "It'll make it easier if we could just buy them from you, we don't have to bid it. If we can get it underneath this certain amount." And that's what you're going to hear in the phone call and what I heard. So, yeah, I think Debbie's staff brought it and then I put two and two together and said, "When you go all the way back..." It's a combination where I'll just go on through and answering questions, but she was not going to pay a $24,000 bill without me looking at it. So, the process worked on stopping it and finding it, but it doesn't change the fact that they were purchased and we have them, and it was done wrong incorrectly.
Are we continuing to use this vendor?
There, well, let's say, let's put it this way. We have to evaluate when you bid it out, who all can bid in the market, because there's certain vendors that are territories. But, and I have no problem saying this, and for, with Jared was in the room, I did question the practice, both from a city perspective and a business perspective, that if you know that a statute is below a certain amount of money, dividing the invoice is, is not a practice that we're going to endorse moving forward. So, if this goes all the way back to August of 2016, or I'm sorry, January of 2015.
Anything else?
But to answer the question, I'm sorry, to answer the question, I can't say we, we can't use them because they may be the only vendor that sells the meter that we absolutely have to have.
Okay.
I think that we could work it out with the vendor or whoever the manufacturer is to say there's a discrepancy, because that $11,000 is an issue. I don't think we, to charge, to charge $11,000 to restock it, was, was not well-received by myself. That was the first issue I went after, was why would we pay 11,000? Then I saw how we were paying for that. Wait a minute, we got 600 meters in a shed. So, all that to say is, the next council meeting, there will be a revised procurement policy for the entire city that redrafts the entire purchasing policy for the city. It will look significantly different than the one that's there before. But I think it, you could also look at it, the people are trying to find ways to make it easier to get things done, and they just went about it completely the wrong way. So, we do need to find a purchasing policy back to our processes, relationships, trust. Doing it that way does not create trust on spending money. And so, that's why we're bringing it out, showing you, and then we'll bring a corrective action. You'll say, "How is it a corrective action? It looks like you're changing spending limits." I think that makes it more flexible for the department head to get things done, but you'll be considering a new, a whole new purchasing policy and procuring engineering firms in the next council meeting. That ordinance will be, is drafted and just being reviewed one last time. But I use, and it is what it is. We, we owe that, we owe that money to the vendor, at least for what we have in the sheds and not for what's on their, not what's in our inventory.
Okay. So, this resolution is to pay the $24,640 that we are currently in possession of.
Yep. Can I answer any other question?
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Resolution number 17-r-58, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri selecting a design concept for intersection improvements at Republic Road and Rep Mo Drive. Need a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Brock?
Thank you, Mayor. Put it in your pack and we're illustrations of a couple of different design concepts. They're very small, I'm sure, difficult to see, so I've got some larger printouts here. You probably aware of cost share program with the school district and MoDOT due to intersection improvements at MoDrive, which is entrance to the high school and Republic Road and rally out. So, the, MoDOT has a contract engineering firm that came up with a couple of design concepts, and really, the difference here are whether the, what might be built in our cost share is expandable in the future. So, the first example that we have is a roundabout that is designed for lane additions, both the incoming lanes and also through the intersection. It carries a price tag of about 1.1 million. That is slightly above by about 70,000, our initial project budget. Those additional lanes would not be built, but they're designed so that you can come in and your storm drains and utilities, essentially, all the groundwork is set up to add those lanes at a, at a future budget. The second concept, this is the, this is the expandable roundabout. Everything else I mentioned is exactly true, just have the wrong illustration here. The second concept is just a single lane roundabout with no design features that would promote or enable expansion in the future. It comes in about 60,000 under our current budget. The utilities cost would be probably a little bit larger for the expandable roundabout, but not significantly higher. The right-of-way cost for the expandable roundabout will be a little, the official right-of-way will be required because it is bigger, but because it's located on the school and part of our cost share that the school will be donating, we're right-of-way, we don't expect the project cost to change significantly. So, what MoDOT is asking for is some formal feedback from the City Council. Staff is recommending with, considering the contribution of Green County to the project and additional $100,000 in the service transportation funds, that we keep an eye towards the future, so to speak, the future traffic levels. A single roundabout, a single lane may suffice today. That is better to invest for something that's easily expandable in the future.
Questions, comments, discussion? Mr. Jones?
I have a question. With the, the driveways to these homes that are affected, how, how does the existing M Highway there, how's it affected?
Right. In either case, these driveways would be the same. They would essentially have access to the, to the westbound lane. So, if they desire to go to Springfield, they'll have to exit, go through the roundabout and then turn back to Springfield. Prior to this, we looked at variations where that roundabout was centered in all four different quadrants, in the very center of the, of the intersection, and those were the kind of issues that we kind of, we worked through at that time, is having maintained the driveways, how does utility relocation and right-of-way cost change when you really move that around? So, that initial process of looking at four or five different concepts led us to this point where you have a roundabout that is centered on a north-south axis and is pushed onto the school. And out of the four or five initial ones, this really has the, the most desirable features for reducing your, your right-of-way cost when you pay out for right-of-way, for maintaining access to other existing properties out there for a utility relocation. So, I guess this is kind of the second generation of concept to the project.
Will some of M Highway here be removed then, David?
It will. It will. And one of the benefits to this design here is that it allows, it allows the majority of the roundabout to be built while you're still have free-flowing traffic on M Highway. So, you can work on everything south of these lanes and then run folks through the roundabout when you finish up the, the other side.
Mr. Self?
So, this one is how much over?
About 70,000.
And that one's 30 under?
Right. There's about a, about a $90,000 difference between the two.
I have a comment. And, and if you can remember prior to, prior meetings a while back, that my, my concern was any overruns that we would have going into this. And I asked, "Hey, how good are we on this bid?" And, "Oh, well, we're safe." And I would say that that's close, and if we run into any problems, we could have more overruns. Yes, we have the generosity of the county. However, anything above that's still going to be on the city. So, I just...
You have to remember, there was a change in that agreement, and now, MoDOT equally shares any cost overruns.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Brandon, one, one other item, too, was we, when we went to discuss with MoDOT and OTO, it was, we were adamant about getting the expandability to two-lane. If you recall in the original discussion, we did not want to be, so the original design cost estimate did not incorporate them doing a sub, subgrade to expand to two-lane. So, that 70,000, why Green County got involved in, in the discussion was, for us to get what we wanted, we were short 70K. So, basically, what the estimate, so to get what we actually wanted in the design, we needed to front the $70,000 because that wasn't matched because we asked for it, not something that was in the original plan. So, to get the expandability and do it right on the front end and have all the, the right-of-way easement, that's what, that's what increased, what they were, they were not expecting it to go up that much, but that's the difference in the numbers. That's why Green County's contribution was so significant, because it made up the delta on the 60K.
So, and in going forward, it would probably be, I'm assuming it would be more cost-effective to do things the expandable way now rather than have to go back and...
Absolutely.
By, by quite a bit?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Pretty much expensive.
Any other questions from council? Discussion? Thinking done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Mr. Brock? Resolution number 17-r-47, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri authorizing the issuance of a request for qualifications for performing an inflow and infiltration study. Before we get that, I, we have a scrivener's error, so I need to ask for a motion in a second to amend the bill. It will be bill number 17-r-59 rather than 17-r-47. So, I need a motion in a second to amend the bill.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero to amend the bill, and as amended, reading the same, I need a motion in a second for the resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Brock?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of good discussion tonight about rehabilitating our infrastructure, sanitary sewer. This resolution would get us on a path to develop quantitative data that would demonstrate where the worst problems are, identify the most effective means to repair those problems, and help us develop a long-term or a multi-year program for financing I and I reduction. This is something that was not anticipated this year, came about as part of the, the discussion about our rehab work. We don't have funds appropriated at this time. So, what we're essentially proposing is that this summer, we would put together a request for qualifications for consulting engineers. It is not, you cannot select based on bids, it has to be based on the qualifications of the firm. They have very good lobbyists at state level. So, we would go through a selection process with a, a general scope of work, refine that scope of work with the most suitable firm and negotiate a, a contract. In my mind, I think we are, depending on the, the amount of extras, we're probably looking at a $300,000 to $500,000 expense. David, I don't know if you have experience in this matter?
Yeah, I don't think it'd be that much.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be about, I think the amount of money you've got invested, because you don't, you've got a bunch of force paint, so the majority of it is clay. I mean, you've got so much force paint in the system and you've got 80% PVC, the focus is going to be on that, on the clay and in the smoke testing. But, so, yeah, I'd say it's going to be every bit of a $120,000, $150,000 just to do that part.
So, since it's really an unanticipated project, we're, we're coming to City Council asking for authorization to kick that off.
Okay. And this is the resolution that we were talking about to discuss prior to the taking up the other table item? So, we have any questions, comments, discussion regarding this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I want to say it, say it again. You can't manage what you can't measure. And we, we have no idea where it's coming from. I mean, if, without the measurements, it's hard, it's hard to solidify where you're going to put your resources and where you put the funds to deal with it. I think this, this creates the measurement so that we can manage it and we can start putting it, it may need to be $200,000 a year, it may need to be $250,000 a year. It needs to go into addressing the situation. But once you target where that is, then you can manage it. But just, that's why I'm struggling with the other one, is I know we've identified certain areas that are broken, but it doesn't mean that that, there's a 500,000 gallons a day getting in there. And we've got to figure out how, how to do that before we go and spend money on. I still believe we've got to do the spot repairs, I just think we've got to look at the whole process, not just certain areas. And so, I, I appreciate you to approve the I and I study. And so I appreciate you to approve the INI study and do it first before we start doing a bunch of other blinding.
Anything from council? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries eight to zero. Going to need a motion and a second to take bill number 17-R-51 from the table.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If you remember, this is the bill we spoke about before this INI study. So do we have any questions regarding that before we move forward with the vote? Any comments? None? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? If you don't have any appointments or commissions, I'm sorry, we need to move on to the item that we moved down to the bottom of this. Need a motion and a second to open the discussion regarding group daycare home special use permits.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Mendez to start it off. He brought that up at the last meeting.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So I have sat through a few group daycare permit application process since I've been on council, and there always seems to be some challenges with them. So I went and did some research. I looked at the state requirements for family daycare licensing, and they allow up to 10 children. They, they are in charge of, you know, making sure there's adequate sanitation, preparation space for the 10 children to play. They do all the investigation and the inspections of those sites in preparation. Reason I'm bringing this is I wanted to bring before discussion, I'd like to hear what you guys think. It seems like to me that the state has it covered, and that we don't have any really good measurable way of approving a group daycare versus not. It seems a little subjective to me. So a couple ideas I had is, one, we either remove this requirement for the special use permit and let state requirements rule here, or we come up with measurable criteria. But I want to open it for discussion, I wanted to get your guys' thoughts and perceptions on why you think it's important, I mean, what your opinions are on it. So now that I've kind of shared mine, I'd like to open it up to council and get your all's feedback on it.
Anybody have any discussion?
My question on it is, if we, of course, if the state, you know, is approving doing it, or that they meet the requirements, they don't go into anything as far as like, if there isn't objection from a citizen for it being there, I mean, is there a need for us to be involved in that in case there is someone, you know, a citizen that has a complaint or concern about a group daycare or, you know, the state? That'd be my only, I mean, it's just a question, because I don't know.
And it's open for discussion. I just want to be careful we're not making any motions or voting on anything just because we didn't have it on the agenda. So, I mean, yeah, I understand. I would ask if there's any other discussion regarding it, or Mr. Mendez?
So I completely see that perspective. My concern is it's four additional children. We already have six and the caregiver's children at play. If you look at the noise ordinance, or the gentleman that complained about noise, four more children, or six children are going to be almost as noisy or bothersome as four more in a lot of cases. To have 10 children, according to the state requirement, they have to have an assistant. So they can't just go in and bring 10 children without having an assistant to help really take care of those children. Last week, maybe about a year ago, I investigated an application for a special use permit. I knocked every house in that neighborhood, talked to every neighbor except one, and only found two that were against it. They were related, and it wasn't because of traffic, which I haven't seen one, that to me would be a big issue, right? It wasn't because of traffic, it wasn't because of children in dangerous situations, it was just an opinion, okay? And as an in-home care provider, to me, those are, it's an entrepreneurial spirit. It's something our community needs for people to be able to find childcare, and it's just, it provides more options for our citizens, and it's pro-business. So that's kind of where I'm at. I don't know, I would, you know, entertain as a thought, as a quote, as a choice.
I'm always just leery, I guess, of giving up local control to the state. I know in education, for example, nothing really comes good from state control compared to local control. I'm not sure, you know, we've got to live with the decision that's made. If we have a daycare that has, like, say, there's a daycare along a certain street, and two houses down, there's another one, two houses down, there's another one. The state may know that, but I don't think the state cares about that. So I think we need to be very careful that we do have some, you know, local control over what ends in our area compared to what the state might have.
Also, how far in depth does the state go when they investigate? Like, what do they look for? House-wise, yard-wise? Like, the one that I think we were talking about, the playground was in the front yard, they had a swimming pool in the backyard, and according to the lady, she was going to take care of it all herself. Now, I can't see how one woman can watch 10 kids and keep one of them going to the bathroom in the house, instead of going back out in the front, go out back where the swimming pool is. That's a big concern to me.
So two responses, all both great points, okay? So she can't have the 10 children unless she has an assistant. The CRS 3061 PDF for family home daycare, I think it's page nine, middle column B, it says swimming and waiting pools. Swimming and waiting pools used by children shall be constructed, maintained, and used in a manner which safeguards, safeguards the lives of children. There is incredible depth in here, down to how the stairs are constructed, down to how the receptacles are safeguarded to ensure the child's well-being. To your point, I understand where you're coming from. If we had five daycares down one street, we'd have chaos. But that's measurable criteria. So I would argue that if we did keep it, we should have some type of measurable criteria so that we make fair and impartial decisions every time one of these are brought forth. So back on the other bill for the Alexander Street, I believe is the one, the bill, if I remember, planning and zoning did not approve that because, the primary reason was because of the playground in the front yard. The request for special, the special use permit request for group daycare didn't address the playground in the front yard. That there was nothing going to change or come out of that, which was my challenge when we didn't pass that. And I think if you recall, we recommended regulating any additions to that for passage of that special use permit, and it didn't work out. So I totally understand where you're coming from, but we also have to trust that the citizens that go through the state process to become qualified are responsible and can care for the children that are in the home, in my opinion. I don't think that's our job. Just my thought.
Goes back to the safety of the kids.
Sure.
And one person, which she said that it was going to be just her, and she might or might not hire somebody to help her. I don't see how that could have been a safe situation.
It also goes back, it goes back to supply and demand. I mean, if there's that many people that need kids watched, and there's that many people that want to use that as their business, if it's, if they so happen to be in the same neighborhood, and they do, I mean, if we have three, you know, permits come in front of us, you can't say no to one, that's, if it's all the same thing. So it makes it very tough, and in my mind, if you get out and you let the state handle it, I mean, that's, that's something that is no longer to do with us, and just open for business, and that's what we want to be in town, is open for business, so.
Mr. Smith?
Thanks for doing the research on it, going through it all. I kind of look at it as the state's looking out for the welfare of the child and the conditions of the daycare, and we're here to, okay, whether or not they can use their property as a daycare, as a home business. I kind of look at it as two separate things. The state's coming in, they're saying, you're, you're a good daycare operator, you've got the facilities to do it, and we're looking at it going, well, you've got the property to do it, you should be allowed to do it on your property, type of thing, kind of two different parts. I also feel like we don't have any set criteria on, on guiding what makes a decision for us. We don't have any criteria on, is there this many daycares on this, on one street, this many people on this street, the type of neighborhood it's in, anything like that. We just go kind of based off of our opinions and what we think our citizens would want versus a set criteria.
I agree. We really don't have anything measurable to go by, and even establishing those types of things would be very difficult to establish what that would be. I wonder if during the last one that we voted on, we had one dissenting view. What if there had been 30? Would that have changed council's vote? I don't know. It's speculative, but there's, there's a lot, there's a lot to that. I am, I am very much pro-entrepreneurial spirit. I, you know, I voted the way I did for the last one and have reasons for it. I, you know, we talk about worst-case scenarios. 10 houses on a street, eight with 10 kids and four that are there, so you've got 14 kids at each house. Worst-case scenario, can it happen? Absolutely, it can happen. I don't know that I want to be the ninth neighbor in the, on that street. You know, that's just, and I don't know of any of my neighbors or anyone in Ward III that would want that either. So I have to think about all of them, not just, no, it's not next to my house, so I'm okay with it. And so, I don't know, I've got, I've got some reservations about.
So all good points. I struggle with that answer because we have nothing measurable. It is basically, if you look at our ordinance, I'm going to read a blurb about licensed capacities, and then I just want, you know, if you read our ordinance, it lists the qualifications for in-home and group daycare, and it leaves all the enforcement up to the state. None of the enforcement is done locally, okay? Their licensing capacities are 2A. If there is one adult provider, the home may be licensed for up to six children, including a maximum of three children under the age of two, or for up to 10 children, including a maximum of two children under the age of two, or both, if only four children are present. All the children may be under the age of two. Now, here's where it says, if the provider has an assistant present in the home, they may be licensed for up to 10 children, including a maximum of four children under the age of two, or for up to eight children who may all be under the age of two. The reason I read that is, there are safeguards in there to prevent one person from taking care of 10 children, which I think is one of the concerns we have. So, I mean, all, all good discussion, I think, I feel like sometimes we just get in the way of that. But if we had measurable criteria that made it objective and fair, then I don't have a problem with it, but we don't have that, and that's where my challenge comes in.
Okay, so where does that come from? So where does the measurable criteria come from? It's not, it's not in this proposal, so I don't know.
No, we don't have it. I'm opening it for discussion. I mean, what do we want to do as a council? Do we want to create measurable criteria and continue? Do we want to do away with it? My personal feeling is, you know, adults should be responsible for adults, and if the state puts tight guidelines and the process is rigorous, what are we really doing in the middle of it if it's not measurable? That's my thought, and I'll leave it at that.
Is this something that maybe Rhonda could look into for us, and maybe what some other cities have done, or?
I could certainly work with Garrett to look at criteria other cities have developed and bring those back to council.
I think the, the most appropriate action would be to consider at the end of the meeting, if we have consensus from the council, to do the research and have an item on the agenda to later date before we do the research, to make sure that we have the consensus of a majority of the council to look at amending the ordinance. Okay? Mr. Dyson, did you have something?
Yes, just a question, it was clarification for me. When it says not more than 10 children, not related to the provider, if, say, if the provider has six of their own children at home, does that mean they could have 16 kids? I'm just asking for my own perspective.
That is true, Mr. Tyson, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, did you have something else?
Maybe down the road, if we do some research on it, get some criteria, maybe with the help of the public, we could gather up some of the criteria if we want to go all out and get with, get all sides of the story, see what people that are in the daycare profession, what everybody wants in their neighborhoods, you know? We might find something out that way, too, that kind of get a feel of everybody involved instead of just going by some other cities, maybe.
Okay, so at the end of the meeting, and council reports a blast for consensus from council as to, first, if we want to at some point put this item as an item on the agenda, and if we do, then that'll enable us to have staff do some research outside, to receiver where we want to go. Okay? Moving on, reports from staff. Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, I want to commend Jared and public safety and every volunteer and every person that participated in Abablast. It was an incredible event. I know the good Lord was watching out for us because the weather said 75% chance rain, and there was not a sprinkle, but I do appreciate the work that went into it. I've heard countless feedback on the traffic control, getting people in and out this year was actually better. So I mean, when you hear a compliment that way, we got people through and out of that, I think we had a whole lot more, and so at this event, it was just an outstanding event. It was, it's a lot of fun when you're standing there and you just see the community come together, and just a great time. And so, thank you for all the work that went into that. There's so much that goes on, and people do not see Jared, that you all do in getting ready for it, behind the scenes, all the, all the crews that are there, taking pictures, picking up trash, handing out water bottles, everybody, council members, I mean, when you see staff members' wives volunteering to participate, that'll tell you how much they're bought into, you know, even what their own spouse is doing. So it just, it was really encouraging to see, but it was a great time, and I know the community loved it. I think they had as much fun last night as they did the night before, at least in our neighborhood, they did, for quite a while, so, but it's our independence. So also in your packet is the final report as required by ordinance, or in my administrator's update, as required by ordinance on an emergency expenditure is the final report on the Shuler Creek list station overflow. You can read my report, then the public works director provided a report. Craig has provided a summary as well, and so you can kind of see just what that event led up to. That will be posted on our website. We will also post that to our Facebook page, so the community, again, back to the transparency side, just can kind of see what happened. And so you'll just see a complete layer of pumps, but that's the quick version, but you can read through that, and you can see the total cost, what the total cost was to repair it. But I will say this, with the work that Craig and his crew put in overnight, that night to get it done at the time that they did, I think the cost could have been far more expensive than what it was. I know it could have been, so we did not exceed the $100,000 mark, and I think that's in no small part by Craig and his crew and getting the trucks, and with the help of Green County, everyone that got trucks there and on the site. So there's a lot of this information. We've had a quite a long meeting, and I just appreciate the feedback. We've had a quite a long meeting, and I just appreciate the feedback and the discussion, so, but I would like to have some level of feedback. It's the first reading of the PDMP. I'd like to know whether that's worth putting on the agenda for the first reading, because we actually had the draft done, but I'll, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. My report, I want to talk a little bit about Have a Blast, because that is something that reflects upon our city so well, and it's because everybody works so hard, whether it's the Fire Department, the Police Department, Public Works, Parks and Rec, everybody who was involved, all of our volunteers, the people who came out to make that, to make that work, whether it might have been the city administrator handing out Coke sodas, wearing a lime green volunteer shirt, but either way, it was a really great event, and we are, we should be proud. It's probably one of the best fireworks events in the driving area that you could go to and see. So, thank you all for that. To cover the, I'm going to talk about the PDMP for just a moment, and I think we can all have our own opinions without, you know, being mad at each other, that's what these chambers are for. So, I have concerns with the PDMP, and I don't want to see people die from drug overdoses either, and I worked in law enforcement for 16 years, and I saw a lot of, a lot of unfortunate events as well. My concerns aren't with necessarily that portion of it as much as it is, it's the effectiveness of the program, so that's, that's one concern. Another concern would be the privacy of our citizens, the impact that it could have. I understand that life is more important than privacy, I do get that, but I don't want to bypass the citizens that have contacted me and voiced those concerns and not at least relay those to you. The other issue I would have would be with the enforcement during the program. It is not a law enforcement function, so I think to have a program like that, if there's not, if there's not a check and balance in place, I don't know who's monitoring this, and where do we get to the point with the access of who needs to monitor it to make it work? So, ultimately, it is up to the council to put it on the agenda, to not put it on the agenda, or to vote for it after it gets there. But I didn't want to go home tonight after this meeting and not at least relay the concerns that I hear from people who, citizens of this town. So, I think that's my job to do that, if they tell me something, so. Having that in mind, we'll go on to reports from council, and it, we want to remember that the daycare, daycare, or the discussion regarding the group daycare, that if we want to put that on an agenda item later, so if we have council's consensus for staff to do research. So, I'm going to start with Mr. Bershers this week. Both of them, PDMP and the group daycare. We need to know if we want to put those on an agenda, on the agenda.
Okay, on the drug, I would say yes. And on the other item, Rhonda, that'd be yes also. Have a Blast, I guess, is the main point of discussion tonight, but thanks so much to all city employees. I know some city employees that day spent 16 to 18 hours working, but ended up the next morning picking up trash at 7:00, 7:30 at the event. So, those are very dedicated people, and we really appreciate you guys very much, so, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
For the PDMP is a no for me, and yes.
Thank you.
Obviously, echoing, I've already told Jared tonight, yeah, everything was very successful with Have a Blast. Very good reflection on our community, and I've heard so from people from Billings and Clever and Springfield as well. I do want to mention tonight that we lost a good man this week. David Fenton with the Republic School District, the Director of Transportation. I met David about 12, 13 years ago when I was in Springfield in another, another position. He was a Springfield Fire Marshal. I don't know that I've met a more genuinely nice, caring individual in my life. David was willing to go the extra mile, no matter what it was, and when he asked you how you're doing, you knew he meant, "How you doing?" And it wasn't impassable, and so, I think, I just wanted to mention that tonight, that we lost a good man in this town. Remember his family.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Wilson?
Perhaps a no on the drug deal. Be all right on the other one.
The daycare? You have anything?
No, everything's pretty much me.
One thing, though, I'd be curious as to the estimate of how many people were there Friday night, because there was more than I've ever saw.
We were asked that commonly by the news media on Monday and yesterday, and it is really hard to tell. We can only really kind of go by car count and how quickly lots filled up and stuff like that, but our estimates are somewhere between 8 and 10,000. Whether that can be low or high, it's really hard to tell, but when you consider people on grounds and people all around parking lots, up and down 60, up and rolling around, you probably get to that number eventually. If you're going by cars, a lot of cars.
Going by cars is about 30,000.
Just asking, same thing, about 30,000 by car.
They lined up from Main Street to 60 Highway on 174.
They were jammed in every spot possible. I do want to say out loud, though, just in case she's watching or will watch, Jennifer Mayfield more or less did a lot of that work, and she's definitely taken it, she did fantastic jobs, so.
Absolutely.
Mr. Self?
PDMP, no, and then yes on the daycare. I echo what they've said about Have a Blast. Jeff and I were up there for, Mayor and I were up there for just a couple minutes, and when you look out, it was definitely more than one person standing out there, and just shy under 100,000 is what it felt like, because it was nothing but a sea of people as far as you could see, and it's quite impressive. Members only did a fantastic job, and just, it's really one of those events that you look forward to, and it's something that we do right here in the city, so, thank you for that. Really, that's, that's all I've got, so.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
On the daycare thing, yes. PDMP, no. I think until it's a state-run program, we don't, I don't want to go with something that's ran by another county. That's my, privacy is my biggest concern, and I'm concerned about what infrastructure they have in place and how they can support it, so, no on that. And then, on Have a Blast, I meant to make it out there, had some family stuff come up, couldn't make it. Everything I've heard from friends and family that were there was good deal, everybody had fun, so. And then, John, I, I know, I knew Dave also, he was kind of one of the guys that taught me and did follow my dad's footsteps into the fire service, they worked together for a few years, so, it was a great loss to everyone involved, so. From Fire Department world, and he was a great mentor to a lot of firefighters, to the school district and the town republic, so thoughts are with him. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ann?
No on the PDMP until it's a state-run program. Yes on the daycare. Have a Blast was amazing. We are lucky enough to be able to walk down there and listen and visit, and then walk back and watch the fireworks. So, we didn't have to drive, which I was appreciative of. How about that fire truck? That was amazing. I'm so sorry we were a little tardy, but we were really enjoying going all the way up in the ladder, so, that's, that's it. And we've all been praying for the Fentons, it's just crushing, so, they're wonderful, wonderful people.
I might add, we've been in quicker, but John had an anxiety attack.
Can't a guy cry in P?
Not only that, a couple witnesses, apparently.
A hundred feet, you thought a hundred feet in the air in a ladder. Mr. Mendez?
So, no on the PDMP and yes on the group daycare. I echo all the comments made about Have a Blast, it was awesome. Also, just want to thank the staff from Public Works, from Fire Department that came and spoke today about things that they're working on, and presented to council, always like to see that. It's, it's awesome that y'all do that, so, just thank you for doing that, and I appreciate it. And also want to just kind of shout out Destiny Church and the 200 people that went around restoring things and painting, that was fantastic, and just shows their love for our community, so I just want to publicly say thank you to them for doing that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez. Mr. Dyckman?
Yes, no on the PDMP and yes on the other, and getting a stack of everything everybody else said, and like I said, I didn't, until I got back in town, I saw the post on Facebook about Destiny Church and what they did, and it really was good to see them out there doing lots of improvement, and we have a wonderful staff in Republic. But, you know, it takes our citizens also to help us to keep it a beautiful city, and they did a nice job. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. So, follow-up on the PDMP, we do not have consensus, it will not be on the agenda and will not be brought back for council unless there's another reason to do so. The daycare, we will ask staff for some input, so we can add that item onto the agenda to talk about further finding some, some, I guess, boundaries, where we want to go with that. But right now, we will go, ask the one that's got the executive session, no further action other than announcing adjournment by the mayor shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as the last matter on the agenda unless otherwise stated on the agenda or is allowed for RSMO 610.02, and this will be under RSMO 610.021.1, pending and potential litigation. This will be a closed session, closed vote, and a closed record. I need a motion and a second.
Motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second roll call vote?
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Bershers?
Aye.
Councilmember Dyckman?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Duran?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
That carries eight to zero. We will adjourn our normal meeting at this time, go into the executive session after a five-minute recess. Thank you all for coming.